Good evening, and thank you for everybody coming. This is our second meeting for the three towns. The purpose was to make sure we keep the communications open and see what we can do to keep working towards making it easier for all three towns. And what we can do is I invited Garrett Corbin from MMA here to discuss some of the legislative issues that he sees in the MMA case coming up. It's going to be a very informal meeting. If you have questions to jump in, we'll handle them as we come. I won't have us go around and introduce people. We are being recorded. And Burwick Community TV will be putting it up and putting it out on Facebook and YouTube. So I'm Tom Wright, Chairman of the Burwick Selectmen.
Steve Elders, Town Manager of Burwick.
Garrett Corbin, Legislative Advocate, Mayor and Municipal Association.
John Hall, currently the Chair of the North Burwick Board of Selectmen.
Charles Galano, North Burwick Board of Selectmen.
Dwayne Moore, Town Manager, North Burwick.
Mike Johnson, Selectman of Burwick.
Wendy Allen, Vice Chair, North Burwick Board of Selectmen.
Paul Philbert, Mayor of Burwick and Selectman.
Laura Bryan, Vice Chair, Lieutenant and Selectman.
Chip Harrell, Lieutenant and Selectman.
Nancy Gilbert, School Board Chair.
Beth O'Connor, State Representative, Burwick and North Burwick.
I'm going to turn it over to Garrett. He can jump right in with his presentation, and we'll go from there.
Okay, great. Well, as you mentioned, if the meeting's going to be informal, I think I'll try to be informal as well. And I'll just explain a little bit about how MMA works from a legislative perspective and open up to questions and see if I can just answer questions that come up. But again, I am a legislative advocate in MMA's State and Federal Relations Department. It's a department of four. We have the Director of the Department, Kate Dooford, my colleague Rebecca Graham, and she's also a legislative advocate. And then Laura Ellis is the Administrative Assistant at what we call SFR at MMA. And so I can explain a little bit more about how the municipal works in general, other departments. But our department is in charge of going to the State House, advocating on behalf of municipal interests, and then also advocating for municipalities before executive agencies and state governments. So that's what we're busy with this off-season, when the legislature's out, off-season, so to speak. The positions that MMA takes on any one piece of legislation or policy, rule proposal, are not up to the four people in my department. They're determined by a 70-member Legislative Policy Committee that we have. That's made up of two municipal officials elected by their peers from each of the state's 35 senate districts. So we get a really good, in my view, mix of perspectives from some of the largest cities to some of the smallest towns, all lots of light, all political perspectives. Of course, local government by and large is not partisan. So when our Legislative Policy Committee meets, a lot of policy discussions are had. But I've been with MMA for five years, and I couldn't tell you which were on the spectrum and maybe these officials fall. It's a really good nonpartisan discussion in the base that they have. They meet usually about once a month during the legislative session, which the longer session years runs from January or late December through till June or so. Sometimes the last few years have been a little bit longer. The short session, so-called, usually runs from January until May or so. This year, we just got out recently. And so then legislature's out. Usually, the years between the first and second legislative session, our policy committee usually takes a break and does not meet unless there's some major emergency-type issue. But we can communicate with them through email. We'll do polling, surveys. Otherwise, in the years leading up to every other year, the general election that we're about to have, when the new legislature's coming in, our Legislative Policy Committee will meet a few times. This year it's three times, maybe one more meeting as needed. But I think we'll do it in three times to form MMA's legislative platform. And that is the bills that MMA is going to advance to try to address some of the major municipal concerns statewide. And then throughout, so the last legislative session, I think there were about 10 bills on our platform, ranging from major issues like revenue sharing all the way down to minor legal housekeeping-type technical issues. And then we'll take, of course, as bills are printed and become publicly available. We review all of them. There's a few thousand bills printed each session. MMA, on average, from what I've seen, takes a position on just about a third of them because just so many different policy proposals have legislative technicals that will trickle down to the local level. So we wind up submitting testimony, usually in person. Sometimes if we're spread thin, we'll just submit written testimony on some of the bills. But we'll submit testimony on hundreds of bills each session and then go from there. So there's a difference between our platform bills and then also the bills that we just take a position on that other people submit. There are 17 or 18 committees at the legislature. So the three advocates, Kate, Rebecca, and myself, each cover six or so committees each session, wide variety of topics. The ones on my plate are Energy Utilities and Technology, where I've had the chance to work with Beth the last few years, which has been great. Energy Utilities, Technology, Judiciary, State and Local Government, Veterans and Legal Affairs, and what am I missing? Marijuana Legalization and Implementation Committee has been on my plate the last couple of years. And then I was covering Medical Marijuana before the Health and Human Services Committee as well. In the past, I've also covered the environment, the Natural Resources Committee, and Transportation Committee, and Labor Committees. So I've got some know-how in all of those areas. I have not covered really the major healthcare policies, Education Committee or Taxation. Those have been in my boss's wheelhouse. So if questions come up tonight on those topics, I'll probably have to defer and get back to you. But the ones in my realm, hopefully, I've got sufficient experience to be able to address some questions. Because our Legislative Policy Committee is still working on developing its platform, it's not public. Once it is finalized, we'll make it public. Probably one of the most transparent and public organizations in Augusta, in my view. We put everything out through our, we have a magazine, a monthly magazine, Main Town and City, that goes out every month. And so we usually do a legislative preview in the December edition and then a legislative wrap-up in the July or August edition, summarizing what happened. So in December, hopefully, our platform will be published in that. It'll make the deadline for publication in that. And then weekly during the legislative session, we also do our Legislative Bulletin that gets distributed to all of our members. It's available for free for the public on our website. MMA's website is M-E-M-U-N dot org, M-E-M-U-N for Municipal. And then we've got our own Legislative Advocacy section on that. I also added a new section this year because marijuana's been such a hot topic. So there's a Marijuana Resources page that's up and has all of the information we put out on that topic. And we're considering adding some other ones for cutting-edge type issues as needed. So we've got our monthly publication. We've got our Legislative Bulletin that's on our website that goes out during session every week. And that's about it for the written publication, aside from our testimony.
I'll just put a plug in, and you mentioned earlier that there's one position open on the Legislative Policy Commission.
Great, yeah, thanks for bringing that up. We've actually got two since this is a mix of towns in Senate District 34 and 35. So we've got, it looks like part of our work is in each of those two senate districts. And then Lebanon's in 34 and South Burwick's in 35. So we have one vacancy.
North Burwick.
Okay, sorry, got a list here. Wrong list, I guess. So either way, we've got a vacancy in each district. So if there's anyone interested. Normally, there's an election process where the municipal officials will submit a ballot or answer a ballot for who they'd like to vote for. If it's a contested race, sometimes it'll be races that are not contested. And then, of course, you have times when, a few instances thrown at the table, and we don't get any candidates, like is the case for these two districts. We have one candidate or one vacancy in each district out of the two slots. So now that the elections have happened, if anyone, any municipal official's interested, you could basically, you could contact, Laura Ellis is the Assistant in my department. She could get a message to MMA. Who fills that vacancy after the election is up to the President of the Association, who right now, the President for MMA and the Executive Committee at MMA, which is separate from our Legislative Committee, is Linda Cohen. She's the Mayor of South Portland, longtime clerk. She's worn a lot of municipal hats, as many municipal officials tend to do. She will be retiring from at least south of her current role in South Portland in December. And then her position's going to be filled by the Vice President. President-elect is Mary Savins, who's the manager for the town of Basselwora. And I could explain our Executive Committee a little bit more if anyone has questions. But so I strongly urge you to join. It is, you know, I know it's a drive. I'm from Bangor, which is about as far from here as northern Maine is to Bangor. But the, you know, for once a month, if you were to consider joining, I know Tom had served in the past, and you could probably speak to what the conversations are like. But they're really, in my view, rich and substantive, and they agree to disagree. They're very collegial when they're disagreeing. It's a lot of the time everyone's on the same page, which really says something if municipal officials from, you know, from here, the Caribou, see something similarly. Then that sends a strong message, I think. And then when they disagree, you know, sometimes we won't take a position. If it just divides municipal membership, then we'll take no position on a proposal. But otherwise, a lot of the time, we'll start somewhere and end up in a different place and find compromise just through the course of a meeting. So it's much like a town meeting of town meeting officials, really. So I've probably blabbed long enough. Any questions for me at this point?
You mentioned that last session, MMA had 10 specific bills that you proposed. How successful were you in getting those passed?
Good question. The housekeeping ones went through already. On the major success that was documented in our, I think it was in July, the July Main Town and City Magazine, covered most of the legislative session with the exception of this special session that ran in August and September. And our major, not her fault. So that, the sort of summary that Kate, the Director, wrote was, saw it as a lot of, we fell short frankly, on a lot of our initiatives. There was, you know, still may, it was probably, given the divide in the legislature, a lot of proposals didn't make it very far. And that was the case not just for MMA's proposals, but other organizations as well. We generally had a step forward on marijuana policy. We were looking for strong local control there. And so what came out ultimately was opt-in provision for the commercial side of the marijuana businesses, same with medical, to a good extent. It would be up to the municipality to decide whether or not it wants to allow the commercial operations in their borders. The personal side of it is a little bit different because that's more of a right than a commercially licensed privilege. So there's, you know, rules for personal consumption and cultivations that's allowed everywhere, but for the commercial side of the business aspect, now towns can, it's essentially a moratorium until the town decides to allow it. Where we fell short on that was the initial proposal that was approved at referendum in the fall of 2016 had municipalities getting a strong share of the application licensing fees that the state collected. That was moved from the bill, as was any provision for revenue sharing. So basically, I'm calling it all of the home rule with none of the revenue. So that may make the cut for our platform next year, just looking for revenue. And speaking of our platform, I guess looking forward, again, we're going to have one more meeting in November to finalize our platform. So I wouldn't, probably don't want to get too far into the details right now because there's still a flux. But it's largely fiscal focus, and as might be expected. So revenue sharing, it looks like, will be probably top of the list. You know, for decades, the state shared 5% of the sales and excise taxes collected with municipalities. And for the better part of the last decade, it's been over, yeah, probably three administrations in Augusta. It's been rated or cut. And so right now, it's at 2% rather than 5%. By law, it's scheduled to ramp back up to 5%. Looks like we'll be trying to make sure that happens. Other areas where there are costs, you know, the state not funding 55% of education, they got further this session, I'd say, than they have in the past, to their credit. But it's still not quite where, where in our view it should be under the law. So looking for funding for that, sustained funding for county jails has been an issue. The state wound up funding county jails, but it was, I'd say, a pretty close call. That wasn't settled until the end of session. So MMA's perspective is that property taxes pay about 80% of the jail costs roughly. And it's state policy against people, you know, the state sets the crimes and prosecutes, or at least the counties do. So that matter of policy, in our view, should be more of a balanced share of costs. And so we've tried to make sure the state pays more and that more of those kind of jail costs don't fall on local property taxes. So that's something we'll probably be working on as well. We're also doing something this year, it looks like we'll be just adopting some themes as part of the platform rather than specific bills that will just guide us when bills come up on that theme topic. So one would be workforce, aging means aging populace, and the workforce is an issue that I think affects not just municipalities, all centers. So it doesn't look right now like MMA will be advancing bills to deal with the workforce issue. But when bills come up and proposals are put forward by other entities, we'll likely weigh the merits of those and decide whether and how to support them. Same thing goes with the opioid issue, serious municipal concern, but it's also a concern of all different kinds of entities. So we'll probably be supportive of efforts, but not necessarily putting forward a specific approach to deal with that. We'll weigh what other people, other experts have to say and put forward on that issue.
Tom, question, you talked about medical marijuana and adult use marijuana. We're in the midst of working on what we're doing in North Burwick. And interested to find out what Burwick and Lebanon are doing as it relates to at least medical marijuana. Of course, adult use marijuana has not been really, rules and regulations, most probably according to today's paper, it looks like fall of next year, when rules and regulations are going to be propagated. But what are you guys doing for medical marijuana?
Stealing my topic for the next order.
For the past two weeks, I've been writing ordinances as it relates to medical marijuana.
We don't have the ordinances to leave out.
At the past three days, basically, for the past 36 hours, that's all I've been writing. So it's fresh in my mind. So just interested to find out what are you guys looking at for medical marijuana? Are you guys willing to opt-in for any of the land uses that are existing? Or are you guys willing to not opt-in? Has Burwick, have you guys just had any discussions?
We have several production facilities for medical marijuana. I think we have four in Burwick. One larger than the other, three. And we have an amendment to the ordinance coming in November to regulate where they can go and also outlets for selling of the drugs.
So you don't have retail stores as well?
We also, we've been working on the recreational one. And as soon as the state gets the regulations, I will be prepared to plug in whatever those are. Burwick, at first, we had a moratorium until we had a chance to work on it. We talked, the board talked about not allowing recreational marijuana in the community. But Burwick was one of the towns that actually supported that. So they came back to the table and then said, well, citizens here really did support that. I'm not sure what the margin was, but.
Substantial.
Yes. So they decided to put together something as soon as we know what the regulations will be, and we pull them out. We're just trying to control where it goes, I think.
And that's basically what Burwick is right now. We're not looking at adult use right now. We're just really looking at the medical side. So we had a four-and-a-half-hour meeting a couple of weeks ago where we kind of hashed things around. We're in the same boat, we're going to allow, or at least we're going to put forward to our voters some land use amendments to our ordinance to allow for some of those uses when they're in opt-in to some of those uses. Limited retail stores, we're going to limit to one of these types, but being banded around currently, allow for cultivation stores, but limiting their size to 2,500 square feet, plus a whole host of other conditions.
Well, some of zoning, I mean, we also discussed a length, you know, which zones in the town, those will be allowed.
Yeah, we've had one, the larger facility, we had some odor control issues. In par of the permitting process, he was supposed to control that better. He had come back to plan for it for something else, and they made sure that he beefed it out. And I think this might be.
One of the key issues that we're looking at, of course, is one of the things is odor. Sanford has a really good ordinance as it relates to odor in marijuana. So if you're looking for to borrow from a community, they have some really good odor controls. Security, of course, is another concern. Locations, next to sensitive areas, you know, schools, parks, churches, those types of things. Those are the things that we're looking at, putting together. They'll get to see the first draft next Tuesday, the stuff that we've, that their last discussions. It's only 33 pages long.
I'd charge it two or three, so it's a new one for us.
Yeah, I'm sorry, we can't provide much help just as, you know, Lebanon's a little bit of a law-abust. There's no zoning. So we talk about land uses, there's not, we don't have those regulations up. We are not, we have a psych plan review in November on the ballot. So again, you guys already have this, if you've never had it. So that will actually be a start for marijuana facilities being in the middle of nowhere as far as, you know, we may be able to use that to help us with odor control and other things. But we don't even have psych plan review as of right now. So we're taking baby steps. We're trying to get there.
Yeah, I mean, I think the Sanford plan, which is South Portland as well.
The two ordinances that we're leaning on, South Portland and Sanford, have done pretty extensive. Portland's in the midst, they're actually, believe they're having their first reading next week, I think is their first reading on their marijuana, because they passed moratorium three weeks ago. So they're having their first reading. They borrowed a lot of stuff from South Portland, because South Portland did a pretty extensive review of that stuff.
Yeah, when we cracked them out, we looked at South Portland and all that.
South Portland's pretty comprehensive. So we borrowed from both those, plus using our attorney to put together other information as well, just so we can figure out whether we've been wrong or we've been right. Just interested to see what other towns are doing, because those are some of the questions that we were raising, because a lot of towns on the coastal side have all, are not currently in the process of opting in. A lot of them are staying, opted out. So the interesting part is where those land uses will shift. They're really not confined to municipal boundaries. It's really an industry in itself, and it's going to, you know, how is that going to play with all the other towns? And how moratoriums on the coast, is that going to push things inward? How's that all going to play out?
And we have a moratorium on all, so which we won't extend because now basically the state has a moratorium. So I don't know if there's any intention to change that, but right now we have a.
I also, Garrett, we're very happy that the opt-in worked out. So that was definitely one of the things, from our perspective, because that was the initiative that we, that allowed us to create, even though it would have been nice to get some tax revenue, that was the bigger piece of the pie, was allowing for local regulation because before that, there was no local regulation. And we were, you know, we're kind of, we're swimming in uncharted territory. Caribous are coming in and requesting things, and we're saying, you know, we read the law and says, you can't do this. I mean, even under the law, you're not allowed to do this. Well, we're going to do it anyway. It's like, so we're glad that the opt-in feature, that's going to be a great benefit to the communities.
Good, yeah, that's.
I mean, I wish they would have passed emergency legislation, because we had to go special town meeting to get a moratorium place. But nonetheless, we protected ourselves. But for a lot of communities, there was that three-month gap that really put some of those towns in. I can tell you, a lot of towns have been bombarded. South Burwick is a good example. South Burwick's now in court because of that. They're going to go through litigation regarding, you know, regarding some of the requests that came in during that gap timeframe. So, you know, but we were very appreciative that we got the opt-in.
That's, yeah.
Definitely appreciate Tom Sodellier, because he was really the pusher of that.
Yeah, Tom, Roger, Kate, a few people that we viewed as really necessary to give towns breathing until at least just develop, have time to think about how to bet and how to handle these applications. I should mention, on the medical side, the opt-in is really just limited to whether how the commercial storefronts. And so otherwise, that new order of law says that municipalities cannot completely prohibit medical carriers. They can only prohibit it by not opting in the storefront aspect. And then they also can limit the number of carriers. You can't say only 10 carriers in a town, but you can say only one store in a town. And it's also interesting, it was one of those weird end-of-session twists, everyone's kind of tired at the end of it. Why, it was originally supposed to be emergency legislation. Even the industry wanted it to be emergency legislation. And it was a post-up vote in the Senate, they needed two-thirds. And they held the vote at like 10 o'clock or so at night, and they realized that a few of the members were either still at dinner or had left for the night. And so they wound up having to get it to pass, they wound up having to take off that two-thirds requirement to make it emergency. So that caught a lot of people off-guard. That's unfortunate. That was not the plan. And it has a period of this three-month sort of heading. But fortunately, we now know that December 13th is when the major medical marijuana law comes in. But I was really focused on trying to get this other smaller medical marijuana bill, L.D. 238, enacted, to just clarify, to answer this question of to what extent municipalities could even try to regulate medical marijuana, which has been a big question for a long time. On the rulemaking side of it, so before the state, for the non-medical or adult use or recreational side, as you mentioned, the state will be putting out rules before they do their licensing. So that is an effective moratorium. There's no, to be a legal commercial operator outside of medical, you have to have a state license, and those state licenses won't be up until those rules are approved. The rules have to be, or at least the majority of the rules have to be approved by the legislature and their shooting, to have the rules drafted by April, which means they'll have to go back to the legislature kind of late in the session if they even make that April ballpark aim or deadline. So if the rules are out in April, that's probably some heavy lifting for the legislature to approve those at the end of their first session. I wouldn't be surprised if they wind up waiting on it until the second session, in which case those rules won't be approved until 2020. The medical rules, the state's still, as far as I know, is still regulating medical, issuing licenses for that. But there will be rules needed, necessitated by this new law. And so it looks like the state is hiring outside entity to draft the rules for the medical. And so it looks like the state is hiring outside entity to draft the rules for the medical marijuana side. And that also doesn't stay full in time. So the state of medical may be in flux a little bit too, until the legislature approves the medical rules too. And it is, it's going to be interesting to see how having these two different medical sector, marijuana sectors plays out. Given that now, medical, to be able to get medical marijuana legally, you had to have a prescription or a certification from a doctor that you met a few certain, you had one of those, a few certain types of conditions that the doctor thought you, you could get the certification for. The new law will say that a doctor can, can give that certification for anything that the doctor thinks that marijuana or cannabis will relieve or alleviate. So that means, I think, a lot more people will wind up just going the medical route. The tax rate is also just a normal five and a half percent sales tax on medical. And there's a much higher effective 20% sales tax rate on non-medical, once that industry's up and running. So until those taxes change, we might see medical be the, just my, my hunch is that medical might be the predominant source of, of legal marijuana in the state for, for some time. But so this will be, you know, every year, this landscape will change a bit. And the last thing I'll say on this topic, unless there's more questions, is that at MMA's convention last week, we had a seminar on this industry. And we had three different municipal officials present, in addition to someone from MMA's legal services department. Those towns were Acton near here. They had what they called a commercial marijuana committee, met for several months and did some really good work researching what's happened in municipalities and other states that have legalized. And they put together a report, you said yours is looking like 30 or so pages. Theirs was 70, I think, plus an appendix, that's 130 or so. So they've got 200 pages of research that's out there for free. And, and we posted it on MMA's marijuana resources page, if you'd like to take a look at that. They did a lot of work, the select board wound up just adopting an ordinance that essentially just limited a personal growing to, to where the person is domiciled, where you live, the state law allows, for growing on your parcel. Growing in other persons allotted amount, if you want. And so Acton decided that they were just kind of limited to where people are, are living, as a way to try to get around. There's some concern out west in other states that that's going to be, and people are forming co-ops or collectives by leasing out their, their property for growing. That's one approach. You mentioned South Portland, their assistant manager, Josh Rennie, was on the panel. Looks like South Portland's taking about as heavy of a regulatory approach as I know of in Maine. And then we also had Hollowells city manager, Hollowells the smallest city in Maine, I think, and Nate Rudy. There is, their counsel, I think, just the other night, had their second reading of their draft ordinance and that.
I just received it.
Okay, good deal. So I think we'll post that on MMA's website too, as soon as it's enacted, assuming it does get enacted. And that one's, it would be, it would be interesting for all of you, if you have the time and interest, to compare South Portland's to Hollowells. Hollowells is a probably less heavy regulatory approach, and more just fitting it into their existing land use ordinances. If you don't have land use, then, then it's a, it's a little bit different. But yeah, Sanford's odor approach was about one of the most thoroughly vetted and thought through that anyone's heard of. And it seems like it's working well, and it's been working there for some time.
What's interesting, just for the other towns, and if you guys, one of the things that we're, we're looking at doing is that even though the state's not allowing, allowing us to collect taxes, we're going to go licensing routes for our medical marijuana establishments. That, which will generate some, or certainly not going to, it's not going to be a win for them. But at least there's going to be a license route where we have yearly reviews on, on those establishments. Hollowells actually had a second reading next week, that's what I actually got today. Their attorney's our attorney, so it's, it's nice. And South Portland went the same way with the licensing route. Really good examples, Hollowells is a much more simplistic licensing ordinance. If you're looking, South Portland's licensing ordinance is like 13 pages, Hollowells is five. So, but it's, but some good examples for you guys to look at if you're looking at the licensing aspect of it. I know Hollowells isn't released yet, but they didn't, I think they've done the second meeting, the second meeting next week. But it's actually a very good document. Really good, at least, instead of reinventing the wheel, at least it's something, it's been vetted. Drummond Woodson did the vetting on it, so we know that there's some good vetting on the, on that side. And they, they vetted it both from the municipal aspect, as well as the commercial side, because Drummond Woodson has their municipal side. But they also are very active in the, on the adult use commercial side. So there's some pretty good vetting on that.
Yeah, they're the ones that threw it out.
One thing I'd say on the licensing revenue side of it, is there is a state law about licensing in general, municipal licensing, that says that licensing fees have to be, they can only cover.
Reasonable interest.
Reasonable administrative, effectively the cost of administering the program, which most.
But at least it covers the cost, that's, that's the biggest need.
It should, but there's a question as to whether it can even cost, cover the cost of police type enforcement.
I don't see that happening. We're just looking at it from a, from an administrative and regulatory view, is that at least we'll be able to cover our costs as it relates to that.
How do they, just out of curiosity, so what determines reasonable? Are there parameters for that?
I think, unfortunately, so, I, I mean, no.
But is there any in MMA?
Yeah, there's a, I don't, I don't think there's strict, you know, numerical limits or anything like that on it. It's just, if, if, if the person who's, who's getting that license doesn't think it's reasonable, they'd have to sue to, in that, go before a judge to say whether or not it's, it is in a reasonable realm. And then the town will have to show its justification for what it's charging. But yeah, otherwise it's just English says that it needs to be reasonably related to the administrative cost of enforcement, something like that.
And the government, Sanford's charging 1,500 a year, Hollowells $250 a year. South Portland's 500 a year.
And there's different, you know, very different levels of staff in each, in the cities like South Portland and Sanford. Have much more staff than in small towns. So it depends on how many people are looking at it, betting it, big differentials. But again, yeah, it looks like we are going to be pushing. And I wouldn't be surprised if the industry's pushing for municipal revenues to help make, make the towns whole for really what's an investment, the town is helping, as it does with any industry. It's, it's, our view is that municipalities are entitled to return on their investment in terms of staff time and what they're doing to try to lay the groundwork for any business in town. So that's part of the basis for revenue sharing in general, and carries over to our view on marijuana. And the reason we think a separate amount is, is, makes sense, you know, above and beyond the ordinary revenue sharing for the marijuana industry is just that it's so new and uncertain, and has a lot of unknowns. One being the cash aspect of it, that's, you've seen reports probably of crime with that. There's this new aspect of it as well on extraction. So people aren't just looking for the plant anymore, but they're looking for concentrated parts of the plant. And so part of the medical law that got enacted would require some state sign off on the extraction to help make sure it's safe. But there was an issue in Bedford, one or two issues, where they, you know, some of that extraction equipment's pretty dangerous, explosive. And there's firefighters went in, in one building, there was a fire. And there was, there was an extraction machine or equipment in an apartment that had the flames hit it, it would have been a huge explosion, that might have wowed the firefighters when they're, caused some serious damage. And fortunately, the flames didn't get to that equipment, but it was a close call. And, and so there, there are all kinds of sort of unexpected issues that will get teased out over the next few years. And so that's part of why we think it makes sense. And the state's looking, unlike other industries necessarily, the state's looking for municipalities to help for this to be a partnership with state and local enforcement. So if it really is going to have dual enforcement, it ought to have a dual share in the, the costs and revenues. That's my opinion.
So why, and I wasn't in the committees, but I, and I asked this question to multiple people. There was an educational piece, and there was funding for the police and for us to be able to address this. And it didn't seem like that high of a cost, not being there. I never got a direct answer as to why that was removed.
There is, I think it might have, rather than being completely removed from the adult use law, or I don't know if there was one in medical too, that I'm missing, but on the non-medical, before that, had its own separate committees, you know. And they wound up just coming up with, I think it's 5% of the state revenue is going to go to this public health, community safety, something like that, fund. And, and that's supposed to go towards training and education on, from everywhere, from schools to police departments and state police and, and what have you. So, so I think there is still some provision in the law for that. But it's, it's yet to be seen how that's going to be dispersed, and whether the state will keep a lot of that for state level training. Or if it'll, I, you know, I'm optimistic that that'll be a balance, and, you know, half of that'll go back towards community level education. So there is some type, probably, many people will probably.
Yeah, I do, because I think of the, I think it's going to fall on the smaller communities, and a lot of them are communities that aren't going to have the right resources to be able to deal with it. And lending comes to mind right to the top of my head. That member is there, Mark.
The, you haven't heard anything about whether they'll keep, the legislature, this last one, the 128th legislature formed a marijuana legalization implementation committee, they called it. And, and so it's up to each new legislature that gets to decide what committees will be there. And so you have the ordinary ones, you know, education's not going anywhere, healthcare's not going anywhere. I don't know whether the legislature will continue to have a separate standalone committee for marijuana. I imagine they would, but I don't know. So these issues will keep coming up, either way, however, whichever committee it goes to, there will be some. There's always opportunity to, if you can't make it to the legislature testify, I'd suggest that you consider just emailing your testimony and if you want to put something in writing, that's always helpful too. I can get the, I'll, I'll leave this list of your members on the legislative policy committee too, that you should not hesitate to communicate with, to let them know your perspective, and, and myself as well. So we legislators see the three advocates from MMA, just like they see other lobbyists regularly. When they see people from their own district, from their town, or members of select boards, I think that's the most powerful lobbying tool, next to children, little kids. I don't know why, they are the most effective advocates of the census. But unless you're bringing your kids with you, you know, if, if you can't make it there, if you can't.
Should we go reverse all our kids' state revenue share? And then ship them on three. The state law.
There's some puppies out.
Yeah, puppies probably. They're a little less articulate, but yeah, yeah. I mean, any field that kids show up for seems to get through. So, and, but yeah, municipal officials really, if you show up, it looks to me like oftentimes they listen. And if, if you can't show up, because it's far away, if you don't have the time submitting something away, or just picking up the phone and calling your legislators, usually, hopefully it'll be effective.
Hedgehog for a classic example. Hedgehog Bill?
Oh, yeah.
That was pretty funny.
There's some odd ones, yeah.
I got one other question I want to ask. Have any of the other towns dealt with, this is on the medical marijuana side, have dealt with trailers that have been used? This basic grow facility, so somebody, because again, it's not a building, so it's, it's, again, we don't want to be zoning, so it's kind of.
So under our zone, we don't allow that. So even, even, I can tell you, Dothraki stance is always, we've been a little bit proactive. So even before we had the ability to technically review those, review commercial grows, we were, especially if they're being done on somebody's property that's not owned by the person. So if it's being done in commercial buildings or industrial buildings, we'd been saying that through our planning board, we've been doing those reviews anyway. So those are things that we wouldn't, we wouldn't allow, because we've been already trying to stay abreast of addressing the.
So somebody couldn't bring their own, bring a tractor trailer onto their property? Just like a vehicle with.
If they're doing it, I mean, if they're doing it within the, as a, as a home grow, there's, there's little that you can do unless you have.
You don't, you don't know, do you? It's like it's on wheels, it's got an AC unit, they got power on it, but it's on wheels, it's right research, it's not a building.
We haven't had that, we haven't.
We've had that problem, but I know of. Now you know of, okay.
There was an issue with so-called tiny homes. People were trying to get out of code enforcement, saying that they're, they're not really a permanent structure. And so the state figured out some codes for those.
One of our components of what we're looking at is we're going to actually do a home, home cultivation rules as well. Just, just so at least it's, it's addressed within our community. So we're looking at limiting to 25% of your residential dwellings, or maximum 120 square feet. That number actually came from Sanford, Sanford's the one that came up with that. Both South Portland and Sanford actually both have that same, that same.
How do you plan on policing that?
That's the, that's the difficult part. It's really going to be, on the home side, we're not going to have, they're not going to have to get a conditional use permit, they're just going to be able to do it. So it's really going to be reliant on if somebody, if a complaint is filed. If people come to us, that's, we'll tell them that, that that's what they have to do. We currently in our, within our ordinance, we already have odor controls and things like that. Certainly not as strict as what we're looking to expand to. But we already have some odor control requirements within, within. So we've actually had to do with that with a few home growers within our, within our community. Where we've had to go with them and say, you know, it's, it stinks, you need to do something. All our commercial growers, we've actually, they've gone to the planning board, they've had to go through the, through the engineering to put their, to put their scrubbers in, and had the, you know, the negative, negative airflow and all that stuff. So nothing gets outside of the building. And even that, sometimes they fail, and I can tell you, it doesn't take long for, for them to fail, for our code enforcement officer's phone to be ringing. And it rings and we go, and I will say, all, all the people that are currently within our community have been, that are growing, when we, when we approached them, they're actually, there's never been an issue of them saying, we're not going to fix it. They're really Johnny on the spot, we're going to fix it, and usually within a day, it's all, it's always.
Are you regulating the number of dispensaries for medical marijuana?
Dispensaries, we currently, we currently have the allowance of one within our community. I think, I think, looking at, looking, if you, if, and we had this long discussion, but if you're looking at, now with the availability of retail stores, if you're going to allow retail stores within your town, I can tell you, no one's going to put it, in my personal opinion, okay? Is that, no one's going to put dispensaries within your community. Dispensaries have to go through that whole state licensing process. It's the paperwork will kill you, when you can go and open a retail store and basically do the exact same thing. I mean, so that, I think you're going to see more retail stores, because they don't have to go through the whole dispensary process. They say, I'm, I'm a caregiver, and I'm going to, I'm going to sell medical marijuana through a retail store outlet. They basically become a de facto dispensary, without having to go through all the state paperwork.
The town of Manchester, if you travel 202, five district, you know, outlets for medical marijuana. Five, you know, it just, it amazes me that they can actually manage these, and they don't.
That was my commute home for, for a while, I was living in Winthrop and just moved. And I was surprised to see, you know, one open, a couple of months later, another one open, a couple of months later. And so Hollowells concern, I think it's safe to say, in some of the smaller towns, if you have a small downtown, there's a concern that, that a lot of the retail space will be taken up by these stores. And then we'll see how the market plays out, just market economics, some of them will close. And so there's concern about just opportunity cost of other businesses that would.
Hollowells, we're concerned about the prime site and what the developer will do there. I think we cut that coverage out.
Hollowell, Hollowell's going to limit to three, within their downtown area, that's, they're, they're going to stop at three. We're looking at one, that's what we're going to look at, and we're going to do some sort of lottery.
Well, the other piece of that too, is that we also do not want, you know, logos, you know, promptly displaying on the, on the front windows, you know, either. So that's, that's just an additional concern too, so that's a part, that's what we talk about in discussions. The appearance of the retail.
In this area too, the cross border impact is going to be something that you'll feel like other parts of the state will. So that's going to be really menacing.
Especially with New Hampshire not having legalization currently, so.
Yeah, and we're, well, South Portland doesn't do it, our.
Yeah, and we're, well, South Portland doesn't do it, our towns will be the closest to UNH.
New Hampshire state troopers are going to have their hands.
Yeah, at the two bridges, you know.
Well, we don't want to become a meta, you know, sort of a destination.
We've regulated where they can smoke in no public places and things like that. I've been to places where it's legal and if there's smell in public areas, it's just offensive.
We should, dispensaries as well.
One of our presenters at the convention said that the smell is in the nose of the beholder, that, you know, the people who like it, love the smell.
The guys who sound on the stage, smells like money.
Yes. It's like the paper mill.
Paper mill.
It's a number of money.
I grew up in Paper Mill Town, I know all about it.
People play offensive, yeah.
On a different topic, John, the revenue sharing, when and what year is that expected to go back?
That is scheduled, I believe, for 2019 or 2020. It's in state law right now that it's supposed to land back up. So. Yeah, yep, exactly. So the legislature would have to change the law and find a way around it to change that. Our view is, you know, there's been, it's just so happened that the state budget surplus has been about what would have been paid to municipalities to revenue sharing if they hadn't cut it.
Nistic.
Yeah, exactly. So I think we'll be making that point right now, the revenue projections, the economy's been strong enough that the revenue projections have been slightly over. So that, you know, before, early on, when there were raids, maybe there were issues with state revenues, but that's certainly not the case right now, so it's really a question of political willpower and what does, their competing interests for state money, as we all know. And so legislators will have to, they can choose, but we're open, we'll honor that time-honored tradition of, you know, they call it, we're hoping to restore the state local partnership as this, the title or the subtitle of our 2018 municipal issues papers, reestablishing the state municipal partnership. Most partnerships I know are, you know, 50/50, 60/40 maybe, maybe even 70/30, but 95 to 5 seems like a pretty good deal in my view. So, you know, I don't think it's too much to ask, but we'll see. It is, it's a chunk of the budget kind of question.
You mentioned, you know, that the state law is there that goes back up, but the state law is also there for the school funding, that is going to happen. And what are the chances of that in, you know, 45?
That is a much, I'd say that one's even trickier because the, each percent of the education fund is huge and I don't know the numbers offhand, but getting to that 55% has been a huge chunk of the budget, a huge challenge. And so what the state did recently was kind of redefine what the state's share covered. And so we're hoping that they will redefine it in a way that accounts for the actual local costs a little bit better.
Right, yeah. It should be 160 million more against to 55%. That's according to the M E A.
160 million more.
Yeah, yeah. But as you said, I mean, when they redefine what revenue sharing is, that changes that number, you know. So, yeah, that's, that and, or not revenue, I mean, the school funding, you know. So, you know, that's probably the two biggest issues impacting property taxes in town.
So our views, you know, they call the tax mix the three-legged stool, sales, property and income. And it's been really heavy on the property side. And so I'm amazed, but pushing since long before I've been there to get an imbalance there. Some state legislatures have gotten close, some have not. There's always different views on which taxes should be lower, which should be higher. And I don't have a crystal ball yet. We'll see how this election goes and we'll see what the new legislature, new governor, what their view is on which taxes to prioritize as lowering, which, you know. I was about to say raising, but no one will ever say they're going to raise, so I don't know, we'll see.
We have a pretty healthy balance, don't we? Circle circle.
Circle, I think.
Yeah, 174.8 million.
I know it's counted.
You know it's counted.
Just out of curiosity, and I thought, actually, I thought this was very well put together. And I was just wondering, just, you know, on the topic of education, just sort of educating the next generation, is there any outreach from MMA to local educational units in terms of promoting, you know, these materials or encouraging, you know, certainly social studies teachers to be incorporating some of this, you know, into their curriculum? Because I just think it's really, I mean, it's just an important source of information for kids. So I didn't know if that was anything that typically happened.
That's a great question. I only recently learned that apparently civics is no longer mandatory part of the curriculum.
Yeah, it's really sad, I mean, it's very sad.
I, it is free on our website, so I encourage people, but I don't know if that we're making any push right now. We also have a book called Local Government in Maine that's been around since the 80s, I think, that just explains how local government works. And that, I think some schools have used that as sort of textbook type of material. I think we updated it a few years ago, 2015 maybe. So that's a great resource as well on top of this. This is more, you know, timeline issues, but for general overview of local government in Maine, that's good. And then on the, on the school front, you know, there are a few organizations at the state level that are focused like Maine Education Association or the Maine School Management Association. Both do so much on that, in that realm that a lot of the lead, you know, I think it's safe to say that they take the lead on education matters and may certain ways in, but it probably doesn't drive that policy quite as much as those organizations do.
I would like to see the schools, especially the high schools and the middle schools, reach out to the local town managers to go into the classroom and talk about local government and talk about, you know, how it works and the opportunities for jobs. I mean, I know MMA's doing a great job of, you know, looking for people to fill positions and letting, you know, people know that there are careers in local government. And every time I've been and I've reached out to the school for that and they've got a response, so.
I do it at a private school every year.
Do it.
Where my kids went to school, I think that was one of the private curriculum and social studies teacher. They actually still have civics in that school. And part of the, whenever she did local government, I went in and did a talk with the kids.
To do the co-ning in the economics class.
It's just, it's great because most of the kids, first of all, they don't have any, they really don't have a clue what really goes on in the local domain. But it's also that whole idea that civics is an important part of our civic duty as an American citizen and understanding, you know, just those different realms, you know, the state, the local and the federal, the federal side. Such an important thing.
Yeah, and then I teach at the community college and now when I'm advising kids, they have to take gen ed courses and I always ask them, so what are the three branches of government? If they can't tell me it's right away, you're taking American government.
I think it would be great to see your organization maybe at one of those meetings, bring that issue up. You know, I'm an educator and a social studies teacher and nobody is really advocating that it's disappearing. Everything is English and math and, you know, local government would be a great thing to see school boards embracing and to see an organization like yours providing information for teachers to use.
Great. I just, hopefully this one's not only a cop out, but what I mentioned at the beginning is that MMA's positions aren't decided by staff, it's decided by our policy committee and executive committee. So, you know, you might put in a plug or a call to your policy committee members and I'll, sorry, I didn't bring more copies of this today, but hopefully we can, I can follow up with an email too, call you the contact information. The platform's not set yet, so that might be, you know, a possibility for me or something. I'd also say actually for any kids or adults watching who are interested, you know, I consider myself fairly civically minded and I only just joined, I joined Winthrop's planning board about four years ago, I was on it for about a part of three years and it was a great experience. And so there's all kinds of different committees and boards to serve on. Yeah, they're typically volunteer capacity, but anyone who has extra time, I think it's a, you know, a really rewarding experience and learn a lot. We had a few planning board members join who had come before the planning board as applicants and they just found the process interesting and we had a vacancy or two. I imagine that's the case in other towns. So I'll be continuing my new town, I'm moving to Georgetown and volunteering for the planning board there too. Phil will help me.
It would be really great to see those 70 people and see how they feel about it. I would love to see that.
Okay, well, let me see if I can put in the plug.
Well, I know Maine County City Managers encourages the managers to get into the local schools if you can, to do something like that. I'm not sure how successful everybody is, you know, obviously you are, but a lot of towns I've been in, you have to really pride yourself into the school system to figure.
Well, I think what's happened too, I think unfortunately, I think, you know, curriculums, I think a lot of humanities teachers have had a lot more freedom in past years regarding their curriculums. And I think what's been happening is that, you know, those parameters for instruction have been, you know, increasingly more narrowly defined. And you are under constraint in terms of what you're allowed to, you know, cover within a given school year. You know, and I think it's, you know, partially a function of that. But I think that's why it's critically important, I think, you know, for all of us to be bringing some pressure to bear so that, you know, we start demanding, you know, as people involved with town government, that our children become educated, you know, in what happens within a town, you know. Otherwise, you know, your kids are just going to lose that connection. But it's just such a vertical gaze, I think, today.
And I'll just say, you know, being in the arts, in the schools as well, that the same is social studies. I mean, the focus of testing is math, reading, writing. And our kids don't even get tested at social studies.
Well, and that's.
You know, and I mean, there's only so much time in a day. So it's not that I don't think it's important, but I think educators are just like, you know, where's the time?
And I don't think, you know, I don't think a lot of, just not to digress too much, you know, to get into the weeds, you know, with all of this, but, you know, I don't think there's a lot of awareness, you know, of that fact for whatever reason, humanities-based instruction is just dispensable in terms of, you know, testing children and in terms of what they should know, you know, in this topic area. And it is, it's just very math and science driven right now. And I think, you know, there needs to be some pushback with that, you know, to sort of, you know, reintroduce the importance of civics education.
It's a great segue to, I was hoping in being here tonight, not just that I've probably been speaking too much, but to hear more about what everyone in this neck of the woods is looking for from the state. So hearing civics, pretty loud and clear.
Money?
That rebalancing of the stool that you talked about, you know, I mean, I think a lot has been put on the property taxes and, you know, I talked to a lot of seniors who are saying they're starting to have trouble, you know, paying their property taxes, staying in their home. And that, you know, if it continues, it's going to be a real problem. It, you know, now a middle-income person is paying, you know, 14-plus percent of their income in state and local taxes, while, you know, the upper-income, which got some decent tax cuts on the income side, are paying under 10%, you know. And it's just, I think a lot of people are feeling frustrated, you know.
I mean, it feels like we're pitting two most vulnerable groups against each other. Our kids that we're educating, our seniors. And it should be about really protecting those two vulnerable groups. As a state, I think we're really falling short in that area. And the biggest reason that that's happening, I think, is the revenue sharing and not funding education at 55%. So it's a really tough spot that a lot of majors are in, in our towns and our district, you know. Raising our property taxes to pay for our education. And it doesn't always go over well. And I think the state's in a position where they really could help out and make a huge impact. And we've seen it go in the opposite direction. But we do, like, in our district, teach civics to seniors for half of the year. I don't think that really revolves around any local government. They have to attend a local meeting. I think that's the extent of local government that's taught, you know, in our three towns. I think we could certainly put a push in at the younger level and as seniors to, you know, define what a town manager is and volunteering on boards. You know, the responsibilities of citizenship are just out the window and everybody wants to complain. And nobody wants to volunteer. And we're not teaching that, those responsibilities. We're only kind of teaching, well, these are your rights. It's a tough balance.
Can we talk about, I think, one of the things that we're always, everybody's always looking, you know, for more funding for important issues and all the issues we've talked about are important. One of the things that I've noticed, and I've worked with Maine Rural Water Association and MMA on our crumbling infrastructure, our water sewer infrastructure, and I think that's another really important issue that we should be looking at. I don't know if you've taken a, if MMA's taken a position on the bonding that's coming out to help assist with that. But that's pretty near and dear to me and that's another thing, if we don't fund that and fund it properly, it causes health issues. Can you talk about MMA and?
Absolutely, yeah. One of my favorite topics too, because it seems to be one of the few things that everyone agrees on. It's not a partisan issue, it's everyone sees the infrastructure needs. And so it is, it looks like making the cut for, in the theme area of our platform, there's a lot of concern just with, not only whether the state has enough money for its infrastructure and helping out with the local roads programs and water and wastewater, things like that, but also the way that the money's spent. So sometimes the paving, there's a view that the, you know, money's put towards skinny mix, they call it, that lasts a couple of years. And because it's cheaper in the short term, when you might try something.
How would you know?
Did I? Yeah, anywhere in Maine you go, I think that's a statewide issue is, you know, would it be a little bit more effective to put more money in upfront on treatment that lasts longer? Things like that. But then, yeah, the water infrastructure sewer to issue is a national issue. And there have been all kinds of different ways to look at it. I was, when I was in Grantsville, Senator Muske came up with this new federal program that would put money into it when, when the times were bad economically. It was called intergovernmental counter cyclical assistance. It's probably the only time that term will get, get used out. But, but there, you know, there have been a lot of good ideas for approaching that. Where they go, you know, that's something that even, you know, on the roads, I think the state can play a lot of a healthy role with that. But in terms of just the major needs statewide, I think, I'm hoping the feds can find a way. You know, agreement, consensus in Washington is extremely hard to come by, but I'm optimistic that the, that infrastructure is one where they could find a way. The last plan that I had seen proposed was actually putting more of a local share on infrastructure. I don't know that that's, it was 70, it's always been 70/30, federal pays the federal state and local share, 70/30. And the idea was to flip that, so, but that didn't get very far. So, and, and yeah, the bond that's out right now, I am going to take a pass on. I want to say that MMA, we put in our own transportation bond. So I know that MMA. So I know that MMA was supportive of that approach. And I'm pretty sure we support the current bond, but I don't want to say that officially on the record just in case I'm mistaken about that. But generally MMA is, you know, it's rare that you'll see us oppose infrastructure issue. I think where we might, the comment that I've heard our legislative policy committee say is a concern about paying for it with bonding. So, yeah, everyone agrees that should be paid for, but then for 10 years or so, it's been paid for out of bonds instead of out of highway fund, which is based on consistent, you know, gas tax revenues and other sources. And so, you know, how to pay for it is more of the question of whether to pay for it, for sure. And so, but it is one of, it's generally a common ground issue, you know, we all see the need.
So has there been any discussion about looking at a revenue, potential revenue stream in terms of raising our tourism tax structure? And I know it's, that's always, you know, you always, of course, here, you know, chambers of commerce start screaming, "We need to raise that topic." But, you know, I think it continues to be an area that we don't emphasize enough. And I know the argument always is, "Well, if we tax too much, they won't come." And I will tell you, having lived in this area for some time, people will always be coming to this area from away. So I guess, you know, I'm wondering how much MMA is advocating for perhaps trying to raise a little bit more through tourism taxation?
I think our policy committee sees that, you know, probably the majority of the committee sees that it would be nice to try to take the burden off of the residents who are having a tough time paying property taxes and try to shift it to visitors. I'm not sure whether we'll be putting something for it, but, you know, I suspect that someone will put in a bill. Typically, it's raising the meals and lodging tax is the way to approach that. And I wouldn't be surprised if MMA supported that, but I don't.
Well, it's not only that, you know, I mean, I look at the fact, if I travel out of state and stay at a hotel, I mean, there were probably five different little separate taxes, fees, whatever, you know. And, you know, I just think we could probably be doing a little bit more, you know, in that area.
Another is local taxation. So many states allow the option, sales tax.
Right.
Maine has not allowed that. It's been proposed in the past. I bet it would be proposed again. The concern, I mean, there's a general concern about too much taxation. But then the local concern is that if it's up to each town whether to assess that local tax and then how much to make it for, then that could actually pit some communities against each other. But, you know, given how much need there is, I think there's been, it seems to be like a little bit, in municipal community, a growing support for that approach. And so, you know, so in other states have all kinds of different approaches. Some, yeah, if you go to a big city, you'll see maybe up to 10% local tax, something like that. I think if it gets proposed, if it were to get through in Maine, it would probably be a really small local tax. But that's another, that's another idea, local meals and lodging. Now I'm getting a little bit into my boss Kate DeForre's realm. She is the tax, she's one of the state's foremost, most knowledgeable people on tax policy. If you really want to get into that, I could ask Kate if she wanted to come back down to this group sometime. She could tell you a lot more, explain, I don't know, maybe correct anything that I've said. That was before I realized the cameras were going to be rolling tonight. I was going to start with a disclaimer that any advice that I give you that doesn't pan out, I was never here, they come from me, but.
We'll make sure we're some good tape.
I changed subjects a little bit, is, you know, municipal jobs is, you know, whether it's police, fire, code enforcement, finance directors, all the towns, all the municipalities are having a hard time finding qualified people. Could you tell us a little bit about what you guys are doing to try to help with us, help that?
We thought about putting in a bill, I think, I might have mentioned before that that's probably more of the, that goes to the state's general labor shortage issue with the workforce and aging population. I think it's safe to say it's somewhat less acute in southern Maine than northern Maine, but either way, we're the largest or next to oldest state in the nation. And, yeah, retirements are an issue, no matter what town you talk to, finding people to fill those roles. So we've, MMA has had this sort of media-type push advocating for the merits of working, thinking about a job with local government. Great option after school, the benefits are usually pretty good. So there's more on, I think it's called hometown careers is what we're calling it. If you go to MMA's website, there's a whole section on hometown careers that can explain that more. It posts all of the jobs that are available, or at least that have been shared with MMA. And then I think on the legislative front, we're probably going to see why workforce development proposals come forward and what we can support. I don't know that we've got specifics right now. But anything that improves what they call in-migration, getting people to move here or return to Maine is something that we'll likely be supportive of. For me, I left the state for a while for undergrad and once I came back, I thought it would be short-term once I was back in Maine. I said, there's, you know, yeah, I love visiting other areas, but I hope that people who have left will, you know, they do so much as come back here in summertime or fall, you know, this time of year. It's, you didn't, no one had to twist my arm to stay here. And I think we had the start of MMA's convention last week was the state economist Amanda Raptor. I think she goes to towns too, might be willing to speak about that demographic issue. There was the whole opening of our convention, most demographics in Maine. And some interesting numbers, some cause for optimism in terms of people starting to move here. It's been, the trend is starting to get a little bit better. But also cause for concern when you see the baby boomers nearing retirement or starting to retire. It's a huge chunk of Maine's population, so, yeah, they're all being need. And it's probably safe to say that it's beyond the scope of something MMA can make or break, but hopefully we can help with the efforts that, but I think there's a view that it needs to be a concerted statewide effort with some leadership at the state level on it as well.
We have been looking for various, you know, positions to fill and get plenty of applicants, but nobody with any municipal experience, you know. And the transition from the private sector to municipal has really had for some of them. They just don't work out.
And the wage differences, you know, you go out of Boston, you can't compete, you know, and businesses can't, not willing to pay more. And here the construction industry is out two to three years in what they have for backlog. But they can't find people, the tradespeople to come in. But when you have bigger unions down south who are paying better, it's not going to attract that kind of, that population.
Well, there's also been a shift, you know, not to get back into the educational realm, but there's also been such a marked shift away from providing kids with exposure to, you know, industrial arts-based types of education. You know, there's just been, just a total movement away from that, you know. And I think you can, you know, attribute, you know, some of those difficulties directly to that. You know, and hopefully, you know, there's been a lot of, I think, a lot of talk about that lately. And so hopefully, you know, we're going to be perhaps, you know, getting back to that emphasis more. But my other thought was in terms of, just trying to look at, you know, resources, I would like to see more emphasis placed on trying to connect the two maines and find a way to perhaps promote everything that we have available in terms of, you know, employment opportunities, you know, down here in the southern part of the state, trying to attract people, you know, from the northern regions of kids who, you know, who live in the northern regions of the state, you know, and encourage them to, you know, be able to stay in their own state, but, you know, find, you know, better employment opportunities. So I don't know if there are any initiatives, you know, in that regard, but it's, you know, we still have that, you know, dichotomy here, it's just, you know, you have two different, like being two different states almost.
I think the community colleges got a bunch of money for workforce development, you know, buzzword. And been working on, you know, doing things, we've got a big program going with Pratt, you know, and they also end up at the shipyard too, in machine tooling. You know, we've been working on even, you know, culinary arts. I've had a student who, you know, didn't like culinary and we ended up setting him up with internship with the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers, you know, which is thrilling, you know. So there are those efforts going on and some, especially in the manufacturing area, it's not feasible for high schools to be doing it because, you know, we've got million-dollar machines that we're training them on and to have them at every high school is going to be, might be pricey. I mean, it's so computer-oriented now, you know. But, you know, there is stuff being done, but there needs to be more. I do know that they have a program for forgiving student loans for some targeted areas. You know, maybe that could be expanded so that, yeah, people with NPAs might get some forgiveness and that might help out towns, I mean, at least on the, you know, for the jobs we need with four-year degrees. But then there's the jobs, you don't need a four-year degree on that are still an issue, need more attention.
Yeah, I'll also say, we've actually been, unfortunately, I've been doing a lot of hiring recently, but fortunately, I mean, we've used Indeed, in past years, I don't think they ever used Indeed. And we get a ton of applicants, but we actually have a pretty young workforce and we've got one authority in that, the career, he's on, he's on the video, he was in last year. But we're probably, I wouldn't doubt it, we're one of the youngest town offices in the state. Just because it's, and you're not going to get young people that have experience. So if you want old people, well then you're going to get experienced and then you just go on MMA. But the problem is, the demographics are all retirees, so there's not a lot of them anymore. So, I mean, we're just, I think we've been fortunate, we've got a phenomenal crew now that can just, you know, but they're new and they're learning. But it's, you know, attitude is everything, so I think, I wouldn't be scared to go on outside sources and get young people because there are people that are looking for whatever reason to change jobs. And I think a lot of the skills are transferable, they just don't have the experience, but they. I wouldn't be shy to do that.
Just taking my MMA hat off for a second, you Maine used to have a public administration degree that was a real feeder for, you know, manager-type jobs and things along those lines and they.
I'm a graduate.
Okay, good deal, yes.
They were the certified program in the country.
They dissolved in 2010, I want to say. I'm a Muskie school that is teaching, they have one or two of the former teachers are at Muskie now and they're trying to do some training for that. But personally, I would hope that the UMaine system and the community college system would think about that degree. I wouldn't, I don't know, otherwise I'll have to talk MMA into offering some work.
I've seen towns that are looking for managers and they end up going out and then they don't get the applicants and don't see the ones they need. They go back out, I've seen towns go out twice or three times looking for people. Same thing with finance directors, code enforcement people.
Same thing with superintendents.
What's that?
It's the same thing with superintendents.
Yeah. Well, you know, I mean, on the business level, I know at York County, the accounting may do have courses in governmental accounting, you know. So that might be something that is an area, you know, where it may be a little more concentration, you know, that the government side might be a good idea. Mention it to the department chair.
This is reminding me too that I think no matter who gets elected this fall, there's going to be opportunity for and then no shortage of proposals on this topic. MMA did interviews with the four gubernatorial candidates, they're on our website right now. Their long executive committee interviewed them for, I think it was an hour piece, so I don't know if any of you have time to watch, but, and this topic came up and they all had ideas on it. So I think, I'd be surprised if this wasn't one of the major issues that gets a lot of vetting and discussion in the next legislative session. I don't know if anyone has the single silver bullet kind of solution to it, but it's not something that's lost on anyone as far as I can tell.
I think one of the, we have expanded on apprenticeship programs in the whole state of Maine. And I think that's really important that we continue them. We kind of cut some of the red tape and regulations that are on these apprentice programs because a lot of kids that I'm seeing, they're, they're good with their hands for plumbers and carpenters. And I actually, I spoke with a couple of people that are in the construction business and they love to be able to apprentice these kids. And, you know, some kids just aren't called dready and will never be called dready. They work with their hands and these are good jobs, these are good positions. And I'm hoping that with MMA and other entities that are at the state house and we're all working together, whomever that may be, that we can open up and make those apprentice positions easier so that we can send our hard-working kids out into the workforce. I mean, there's always going to be people in the tourism and restaurant industry, there's going to be people in the construction industry. And you need good math skills to do that type of stuff, but you can get that in your high school. And you can, if we could send kids out, I think of our local automotive places and they're seeing a hard time hiring as well. And if these people that are the baby boomer, boomers right now that are getting ready to retire, I'm sure that they would love, if they could, with less red tape, be able to pass their skills on to other individuals that want to learn.
Sometimes hands-on's the best. I think it's also a logistical problem because I think in terms of helping kids to access those apprenticeships, you know, technically talking about and just reality-based, physically getting kids from one part of the state to the other, I mean, how do you make that happen? You know, I often just dreamed of the day when we'll have, you know, Amtrak service, you know, up into the county. But literally what a difference that would make, you know, in terms of tourism, you know, just, you know, instead of people driving eight hours, you know, you couldn't hop a train. You know, it sounds simplistic, but I think it's also something to be looked into in terms of how do we start connecting the state and so that we're sharing the resources, you know, certainly I think have, you know, many resources down here that people in northern regions of the state could, you know, benefit from. And certainly in terms of what they could offer in terms of workforce, you know, and their skills in that region, share with us. So I would just like to see some emphasis on being able to perhaps better connect, you know, people within the state and tap into the rich resources we have here. And I don't know if that's ever part of the discussion, but to me it's a logistical issue too.
Rail comes up every year, they've got a pretty strong advocate or two for rail interest.
One of my interests.
Yeah, so when I was a kid, we took the train from Elsbeyanor to Monson, I think, to Montreal.
Montreal, yeah. Brownville?
Right.
Well, you look at where the train travel was, you know, in this country. I mean, and you, particularly a state like Maine, you know, just in terms of, you know, what a large state it is and, you know, not to have to rely totally on either ear traffic or driving. So I don't know, I would just, I would love to see some emphasis on train travel and just sort of furthering the development of rail lines.
Get some cars off the road.
Well, I think it has multiple benefits, yeah. Just that alone is the pollution aspect, the ability for kids who were growing up in the county to, you know, come down into, you know, this neck of the woods and tap into, you know, the multiple jobs that are available down here so they don't have to go out of state. You know, I just think there are a lot of benefits to it. And sometimes it really is, you know, quite frankly, a logistical issue.
Don't let them hear that up there, they've got serious workforce shortages up there. I have a friend who's an attorney up there who put out a pitch on Facebook the other day for, they're just having a real problem finding attorneys serving up there. And what happens is that if you only have a few, then they all get a conflict of interest before you know it with clients. And she said that she takes every Friday off and that, you know, most attorneys. And she said that she takes every Friday off, and that, you know, most attorneys she knows in big cities don't have that luxury now, and so...
But it would encourage, but I think it's also reciprocity. I mean, I think there are certainly a lot of people, you know, who would love to spend more time up there because it's, you know, it's a great part of the state, but, you know, who wants to drive eight hours, you know, to get up there? Anyway, yeah, I know. I probably could too, to my difference.
From here to now, I'll...
You're getting down to a sign.
People are ninety now, right?
Pretty close.
It was always ninety up there.
It's after eight o'clock, we're going for about an hour and a half, is, you know, don't let this go too long. Any further questions or comments for...
Just one question in terms of the legislative, the legislative committees. Is that posted on the website in terms of, you know, what members are on each one of the committees?
It's on the legislature's website. They've got, and we've got a link to it on our website. We are revamping our website to make our section of the website, to make it a little more user-friendly. So hopefully by the time the next session starts, that link will be a little bit easier to find. And then if you go to it now, you know, it's probably dated because the 128th legislature has adjourned. So you probably want to look, once the new, when will that be, like, late December maybe, when the committee assignments are announced, something like that. And you can find out who's on which committee and whether you've got, you know, local clatter on the committee that you're interested in, or either way, you've got your senators and cover bigger areas. Yeah, good question.
You said that one of the committees that you directly are a advocate on, and deal with is energy and utilities. Can you give us any kind of updates on solar, CMP, anything happening?
I don't know, I think Tom was trying to hit that. That is a whole can of worms there. Or there's, I mean, there are just broad topic areas that there's a lot of debate on, you know, which types of energy should be subsidized and we should not. And then Central Maine Power has had a whole host of, you know, they've been, I think, they even admitted they've had a long year, to put it mildly. So, but that currently, the chair, you've got, you know, a member of the committee here, a former member of the committee, and hopefully, I don't know if you're interested in sitting on that committee again in the future or not, but...
I love that committee. It's deep, I can talk to you about these issues for days on end, which we...
We'll save that for another session.
Current Senator Lutzom from, you know, just near here, I think he's from... He's been the senate chair on the committee too. Yeah, I'd say stay tuned, I think on a lot of the policy areas with a new legislature and a new governor, whatever's happened in the past, there's no telling whether that will carry forward or whether there will be a whole different approach or whatnot. So I wouldn't even, based on what I've seen, I wouldn't venture to make predictions on what's going to happen in a few months. I think that it's pretty clean slate and no bets are off right now, yet.
The plan for our next meeting is, I would suggest maybe wait until, you know, sometime toward the end of January. And the new legislature will be in session, we'll know who our representatives are, and a better idea of what's going on. So we'll just keep in touch until then.
Sounds good.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Stay tuned in the next session, I thought.
Yeah.